Communications, for communications. Okay, I got you. And I didn't ask anybody, so we'll have Casa and Communications have, and then we'll do something in community development. Good evening, everybody. Our April eighth, two thousand twenty-four meeting is called to order. We're gonna have an invocation and then pledge. Will we stand for both of those, please? Shall we pray? Dear God, we thank you for allowing us to arrive here safely today despite the inclement weather. We thank you for keeping us safely through all of this. We pray that you would look down upon this meeting, that our thoughts would be clear, our hearts would be in the right place, and that we can help to continue to move our city in the direction it should go. Thank you that even if we disagree, we're not disagreeable with one another, we could do it in a way that's respectful. And God, we thank you for everybody who's here as we have arrived here safely. Let us get to our destinations safely as we depart. In your son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in reciting your pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Nielsen. All right, next item is the reading and approval of the minutes from our March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Mayor, make a motion that we dispense with the reading of minutes of March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, and that it be adopted if there be no corrections.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to adopt the minutes as they have been written, given that there are no adjustments or corrections that need to be made. Any comment about this? Okay, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, then motion carries. Next, we, as we've been doing monthly, recognizing employees from various departments. And this is purchasing, which actually several different parts of the city falls under its leadership, from airport, I think we know that, garage, the actual purchasing part, the warehouse. And I think I got all of them in.
Yes, that's pretty good.
Pretty good, okay. All right, so wanted to talk a little bit about Mrs. Braxton. She's been with the city for sixteen years and just want him to kind of share a little bit about it. She couldn't make it tonight. She's at prayer, and so certainly the Lord comes first. But go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, Lisa has been a long-term city employee. She started years ago when she was in college, actually as a part-time student employee in the utility department. After she graduated, she went on and I think she worked for the U.S. Post Office for a little while, then several years in the H.R. Department at the hospital. And then we hired her back with the city sixteen years ago. So she's been with us for sixteen years. And she is, you know, happy to be at work every day. She's a hard worker, self-motivated. When you want something done and want it done right, she's one you, you can give something to and you can count on it being done correctly and all with a good attitude. And she, we're tickled, we're lucky to have her out there purchasing. She's a great employee.
She really is.
Yep.
Wonderful personality.
Does she process the, what does she do? You said it earlier.
Well, she's a buyer technically, but she helps with the warehouse quite a bit. You know, restocking is, when I say restocking, as in ordering the items that need to be ordered. And then they'll get them restocked in the warehouse. But if we're shorthanded in the warehouse, since we only have two people in the warehouse, she'll get back there and help the utility department or public works fill in orders or whatever it is they need for that day. She is now the primary person for workers' comp. Workers' comp is all handled out at the purchasing department. And she handles probably eighty percent of the workers' comp, all the day-to-day business with all our claims and working our claims.
You know, this is really a dual deal. It allows us to recognize our employees to give those affirmations. But also, I think it's good that the public know with some of these folks who are behind the scenes what they're doing. So how important the work is. So, you know, everybody's, everybody's essential to what we're doing here. So again, we do appreciate Lisa. All right, we've got several proclamations on the agenda tonight. And the first one is read by Councilwoman and Large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number zero-two-three of two thousand and twenty-four. Proclamation declaring Monday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four as Earth Day, Earth Day in the city of Natchitoches. Whereas the city of Natchitoches is committed to protecting and preserving its natural resources and recognizes the important role its citizens play in this endeavor. And whereas this year's theme, Planet Versus Plastics, underscores the urgent need to combat plastic pollution for the sake of human and planetary health. Earthday.org is steadfast in its commitment to reduce plastic production by sixty percent by two thousand and forty. Whereas Earth Day is a time to come together with the rest of the world's citizens to celebrate the efforts of young and old alike, who strive to improve the environment, not only for the benefits of today, but also for generations to come. And whereas Earth Day reminds all of us to be stewards of Natchitoches' precious natural resources. And whereas by using our natural resources wisely, we help build a stronger economy and healthier future for all. And whereas on Earth Day and every day, Natchitoches citizens are encouraged to preserve our natural resources by participating in efforts to reduce consumption, consumption and waste, encourage recycling, utilize renewable resources, eliminate pollution, and conserve water, land, and energy. And furthermore, let it be known that the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana hereby encourages its residents, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and commit to being good stewards of Natchitoches' air, land, and water resources to create sustainable, healthy communities. Now therefore be resolved, the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana hereby pledges Earth Day, Monday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, to support global initiatives in the city of Natchitoches and to encourage others to undertake similar actions. Therefore, I Ronnie Williams, Junior Mayor of the city of Natchitoches, do hereby proclaim Monday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four as Earth Day in the city of Natchitoches, and strongly encourage all citizens to join the global initiative by participating in events, signing petitions, volunteering, and spreading awareness. Let's protect our planet and take a stand against plastics. I move for adoption of resolution, proclamation, Resolution Number zero-two-three of two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Earth Day, I mean, this is the annual proclamation that we do here. Now, we've also recently, what's happened is Lieutenant Governor Nungesser has started this initiative, Love the Boot Week. And so I think the last two or three years he's done it, we've been participating in it. Randy, I'm not sure if y'all signed up. Have y'all signed up for this year already over there, community development?
Yes, sir, we have. And we have a commitment from the same Coca-Cola bottling group in Shreveport. They probably gonna bring down fifteen, twenty people to participate with us.
And it's, it always coincides, Love the Boot Week always includes Earth Day, all right, which this year is the twenty-second of this month. But Love the Boot Week actually starts on April twentieth, and it goes through the twenty-eighth. So, so I know in community development, they always sign up. You get T-shirts, I think gloves or something like that. And then I know we've signed up the mayor's youth council as well. So be on the lookout for information about how to participate in these cleanups during Love the Boot Week, which encompasses Earth Day, all right? Any other comment here? While we don't have anybody here to receive this and take a picture with on this particular proclamation, we do have for the others. But we certainly want everybody to get involved as best you can. If you can't participate in what community development is doing, what the youth council is doing, I'm sure there'd be other groups, or maybe just do your own thing to help to mainly pick up litter and things like that and help to promote a cleaner city for us, okay?
Mayor, can I ask Ms. Eleanor Westmoreland if she will come forward and receive this proclamation?
Ask Ms. Westmoreland right there?
Yes.
If she's willing.
Would you please come forward, Ms. Westmoreland? Ms. Eleanor, would you come forward, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, you want to present that too?
Yeah, we'll do it, we can do it. All right. Good talking. Hey, any comment, question? All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. We'll get you right here.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Westmoreland. Next proclamation is read by Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number zero-two-four of two thousand and twenty-four. A proclamation declaring April two thousand and twenty-four as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Natchitoches. Whereas National Child Abuse Prevention Month is an annual opportunity to raise awareness about issues surrounding child abuse and neglect and engage community members in the ongoing effort to keep children safe. Whereas CASA is a group of national child abuse prevention partner organizations selected by the Children's Bureau to serve as partners in the National Child Abuse Prevention Initiative. Whereas the work of CASA and volunteers is crucial to preventing child abuse and enduring correction, ensuring that children live in a safe and permanent environment where they can thrive. Whereas students have indicated that children with CASA volunteers are less likely to enter in long-term foster care, more likely to receive needed services, and less likely to re-enter the foster care system. Whereas child abuse prevention requires partnerships among federal, state, local governments, faith-based and community-based organizations, schools, law enforcement, social services. Whereas during National Child Abuse Prevention Month and throughout the year, I encourage all citizens of Natchitoches to find ways to cherish our children, strengthen our families, work together to eliminate child abuse and neglect, and strive toward a shared dream in which every child is safe and happy. Now therefore, I Ronnie Williams, Junior, Mayor and the Natchitoches City Council do hereby proclaim April two thousand and twenty-four as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Natchitoches and call upon all citizens to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, which in turn will strengthen our community in which we live. May I so move to adopt Resolution Number zero-two-four?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt this proclamation. We do have representative here from CASA. I don't know if there's anything additional you would like to say? Can we have you to come, even if it's just for a few seconds? Please state your first and last name and just...
Okay, I'm Emily Dahl. I'm the executive director for CASA of central Louisiana. You pretty much stated everything that I was going to say in that. I do want to thank the mayor and the city of Natchitoches for recognizing April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we currently, we're servicing Natchitoches, Red River, and Sabine parishes. We have fifty-two children in our care currently. So we're always looking for volunteers. If anyone is ever interested, please reach out. It's a, it's a training process you have to go through, but we will be with you every step of the way. Thank you.
You have a facility somewhere?
Yes, we are located in Natchitoches. We're twelve-hundred Kaiser Avenue, Suite B.
Okay.
That's where we do the training facility and everything, too.
There's some sponsorship you're doing right now, too, right? Some sponsors are sponsoring some of what you do?
The pinwheels.
Pinwheels.
Think about that, the pinwheels.
Yes, we have our April awareness campaign going on. And so we're encouraging community members to purchase a pinwheel garden from CASA. And it's starting at twenty-five dollars. You receive ten pinwheels and a sign that just recognizes that April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. CASAs throughout the state participate in this event. So we really encourage everyone to just help us bring awareness to this issue.
Okay, is that fundraiser too you do?
It's more or less just like awareness. We're just really wanting to do awareness.
I think he's referring to, you know, we talked about that, you all did have the fundraiser.
We did.
You haven't had that in a while because of the COVID.
No. Yeah.
We all missed going to those. I think that's what he's referring to.
Yes, we used to do a CASA gala or a CASA awareness social. And we kind of, after COVID hit, we kind of backed away from that. But we are in the process of starting other events.
Well, look, Emily, is that right? Thanks so much for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
This is very important and noble work.
Thank you.
And I just want to add, if you haven't, if you're out there listening, if you haven't gotten your pinwheels, please get them. It makes your yard look so good. Mine, I love mine. And at night, they light up. I love them. They look so good in the yard. So please support CASA if you can.
Thank you.
Thanks again. We don't want you to go too far, Emily. Any other comment or question here? All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, Emily, we want to come get a picture.
Wayne, you need to get up here.
Yeah, get on up there.
He's on the board.
You on the board?
Yep.
I think it's Jack, and Jack should be on the...
Yeah, come on, Wayne. He's on the board.
He doesn't want to get in the picture.
Golly.
All right. Next is Councilman Nielsen for Community Development Week.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-four is a proclamation declaring the month of April two thousand and twenty-four as National Community Development Week in the city of Natchitoches. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has operated since nineteen seventy-four to provide local governments with the resources required to primarily meet the needs of low and moderate income persons. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program is among the few remaining federal programs available to address the needs of low and moderate income persons and small cities. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has provided the state of Louisiana with important and flexible assistance to meet the needs of low and moderate income residents of small cities by funding sewer, water, and street improvement projects, economic development projects, clearance, demolition, and make-a-difference projects. And whereas Congress and the nation acknowledge the critical value of the Community Development Block Grant Program and the significant projects that rely on its funds for support. And whereas the month of April two thousand and twenty-four has been reserved for recognition and appreciation of the Community Development Block Grant Program. Now therefore, I Ronnie Williams, Junior Mayor and the Natchitoches City Council do hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand and twenty-four as National Community Development Week in the city of Natchitoches. And I'm oive to adopt Resolution Number twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, motion, excuse me, not mention. Motion made and seconded to adopt this proclamation. I mean, it's, it's pretty, I think that third paragraph is pretty clear as to what this program does and why it's vital, funding the small cities with the sewer, the water. I'm sure we've gotten all that over the years before. Street improvements. And this new one, make-a-difference. So recently, I know we've gotten the clearance program. That's a two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar grant that we're gonna have to help us to clear some properties, some abandoned properties and things of that nature. And, you know, these are savings.
In every category.
They are a benefit to the community. That's receiving them. And, you know, they're savings to that local municipality. So I think that these are really, really important. Water sector, was that a, Randy, was that a CDBG one? Do you know?
It was funded directly by the federal government, but the CDBG office handled all of the admin paperwork on all of it.
Okay, got you. So it comes to, it comes to them, okay? So very, very important program. Any comment here, any other comment? All right, I know we recently applied for some sewer. I don't know if we heard back from that, did we, Matt? Do we know? Did they tell us? We haven't heard back from it, okay? So, yeah, that was what we submitted recently. All right, Mrs. Stacy's sending us a...
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, I think Councilman Nielsen has a suggestion about...
I think we're gonna pivot here.
Oh, we are?
We look all the way down that road. Every single person is involved. And if we look up here, every single person is involved. So I think we all need to come and test the skills of the media to see if they can get us all in the picture.
Let's get a big one, y'all.
Oh, y'all have a challenge, Carolyn.
Come on, Kevin. Kevin don't want to come, Councilman.
Okay, look over here, smile. Yeah, look over here, smile. Watch me get off this.
All righty, that was fun, fun, fun.
Carolyn, you cannot let Kevin out, do you?
All right, we've got one more proclamation. It's another important proclamation dealing with public safety telecommunications week. And it's read by Councilman Harrington.
This is Proclamation twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time to require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Natchitoches Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Natchitoches Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Natchitoches declares the week of April fourteenth through April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Natchitoches and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Therefore be it resolved, I Ronnie Williams, Junior Mayor and the city of Natchitoches, I'm sorry, and the Natchitoches City Council hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth through twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Natchitoches. I move to adopt Proclamation twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded to adopt this proclamation. Like I said, all of these proclamations tonight are necessary. This one certainly is as well, given the work that our telecommunications do in public safety. You know, so, I mean, they're reporting a lot of, a lot of things that are going on, wrecks, shootings, and all these things like that. So it can get, I can only imagine, it can be very emotional at times, what you hear, what is being reported to you. So we're just thankful, just, I say we're thankful for them, but we also want to be a part of this recognition that is going to happen in a, next week and through the twentieth. Chief, I know we have your communication supervisor, our communication supervisor here, but I know that's something you might want to say, given your thirty years or so in law enforcement. And we do want you to keep it brief, but, you know, but, but we do, I think it is important that you say something.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say that we do have Communication Supervisor Daquan Johnson here. She's been with our department for, for a decade and a half. She was the first person designated with the title of Communication Supervisor under the Civil Service statute that became law back in two thousand and eighteen. She's done a tremendous job for us. She supervises eight people at our department. And for the longest, we've run a staff of communicators that's been short-staffed, just like with any other positions that we've tried to fill. And at this time, fortunately, we are fully staffed. She's in the process of training. Telecommunicators do have a tremendous job. They suffer from the same stresses, and they consider it actually one of the most stressful jobs in our, our community and in the nation. They suffer from what's known as Critical Incident Stress Syndrome, similar to PTSD. And all too often, that is a critical service that is overlooked. Because if we never receive the information, as y'all stated, we can't get resources to those locations. That's for fire, medical services, and for the police. They're our lifeline. They feel the stresses that we all too often know when a call's finished. They don't. They, they have to sit at the NATCOM, taking nine-one-one calls and getting the information over the radio. And for them to be able to keep calm, get the information, try to actually provide services over the phone to victims and to people who need assistance, and also at the same time dispatch us and communicate with other resources. It's a tremendous job, and we owe a debt and, and to their, to their commitment to providing the services and safety to our community.
Okay.
I'd like to add just a little something to that. So we don't, we have the sheriff's offices out there along with the police department. We have a great group of individuals out there that do a wonderful job, and we're so very proud of all of them out there. And they are the first line of defense in our public safety job. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. We appreciate them.
Would you like to say a few words?
Ms. Johnson, we'll get you to state your first and last name and then whatever remarks you have to say to us.
Hello, I'm Daquan Johnson. I'm Supervisor of Communications for the Natchitoches Police Department. And we are excited about Telecommunicator Week. It's just a week of celebration and appreciation to our employees who give so much of their time and dedication. As Chief said earlier, sometimes we don't know the outcome of things and... we get very emotional, and it's hard to keep your emotions and everything intact, but we do it well. We try to. And we thank you all for just recognizing us.
Thanks so much for the work you do.
Thank you for you do.
Thank you.
We don't want you to go too far, Ms. Johnson. Any other comment?
Just thank you for what you do.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, Councilman Harrington and myself, along with both chiefs, with Ms. Johnson. Put Ms. Johnson in the middle.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
All righty. Got an ordinance for final that's read by Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 007 of 2024. An ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Natchitoches for the fiscal year June 1, 2024, through May 31, 2025. Whereas the fiscal year of the city of Natchitoches is from June 1, 2024, through May 31, 2025. Whereas a budget has been prepared by the Finance Director, Clarissa Brown Smith, and has been submitted by the Mayor, Ronnie Williams, Jr., to the city council for review and consideration. Now, therefore, be it ordained that the Natchitoches City Council does hereby adopt the budget for the fiscal year June 1, 2024, through May 31, 2025. City of Natchitoches 2024, 2025 fiscal year funds. The general fund reported $19,866,000. The utility fund, $42,447,000. Special and capital project funds, $25,880,000. May I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 007 of 2024?
Second.
All right, motion had been made and seconded to adopt this ordinance. We had our budget here and earlier where Clarissa Brown Smith explained the key points, the highlights of our budget this year. We make a pamphlet every year. So, she kind of went over some of those points. Any additional comment you'd like for this? Meeting, Mrs. Brown Smith?
No, sir. If anyone have any questions, I welcome any questions or comments.
Any questions or comments about the budget? Okay, Mrs. Stacy, seeing that, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All righty. Next, we have one ordinance on here for introduction, and that's read by Councilwoman Larch Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 008 of 2024. For introduction, it's an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a donation from Terry SFC Contract Services Inc. of certain material and supplies that may be utilized in the city of Natchitoches. Water Department authorizing the mayor to execute all instruments in connection therewith and providing for public hearing. Whereas, SFC and the city of Natchitoches have agreed that the value of the above described property is, and is is the sum of $25,000, said value having been determined by agreement of the both parties, and have agreed that this valuation is fair and reasonable. Whereas the mayor wished to go over record to thank SFC for the generous donation to the city. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city in regular session that the city does accept the donation from SFC Contract Services for the materials described above. This is for introduction only.
Okay.
And the materials.
Yeah, backup.
Gaskets.
Mm-hmm.
Spoons, iron spoo, pieces, duct, ductile, iron, pipe. Those type items are being donated, donated to the city of Natchitoches. By SFC. We thank you.
Man, how would y'all use this donated material?
We'll use it in our normal everyday repair of water lines. Mr. Terry used to be in the business of doing municipal water. And he's no longer in that business. And he was actually cleaning up his yard, and he came across this stuff and called me. And I went out and looked at it, and he wanted to know if it's something we could use. And I said, yes, it is. He said, well, I'd like to donate it to the city just to get it off of his property. He says, I don't want it here anymore. It's in my way. And I didn't, didn't want to just throw it away. So, he thought of the city and said, hey, maybe y'all can use this.
I just want to add that SFC Contract Services represented by Mr. Terry Scholar.
Yeah, he is the owner.
He's the owner. We want to thank him for his donation.
Council, y'all got any questions or comments here?
Thoughtful.
What's that?
Say that was thoughtful.
Okay. Yeah, I think this, Stacy was telling me this has happened before. We've been donated, some things have been donated to us, so. All right, that's good, y'all. I think it's great. Okay. All right, just for introduction, so, if any question arises, please reach out to us, okay? Now, we have two resolutions remaining on the agenda. The first one is read by Councilman Harrington.
This is Resolution 26 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two to the contract between the city of Natchitoches and ACA Mechanical Industrial LLC for HVAC improvements at the Martin Luther King Jr. Recreational Community Center. And this change order doesn't change in amount, however, this changes the contract time. The contract time will be increased by this change order number two from 170 calendar days. And the revised contract time will be 350 calendar days. And the project engineer, Henry Schuler, has recommended this change order. And the city is of the opinion the change order number two is in the best interest of the city. I move to adopt Resolution 26 of 2024.
Second.
Okay. So, we basically, you know, we double the time is just because we're getting started on the event center? Is that what it is basically? No? Oh, this is all MLK?
No, it's all the delays in getting the equipment. You know, COVID was going on, and it took so long to get the HVAC equipment in. So, that's just to allow for the additional delivery time.
How many days are we into the thing? Just the estimate?
Probably, you know, based on this, about 350.
So, this isn't saying it's 350 something more days from now. It's just saying it's, the original contract was 170 days or whatever, and we're going back and fixing that.
We're adding 170 days to the contract. Otherwise, you have liquidated damages and things like that to contend with.
Okay. So, the work is done, but just after.
That's correct. The next item is a substantial completion.
Okay. All right. Any comments here? All right, seeing that, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. And Ed referenced this one earlier. This is next resolution, number 027 of 2024. Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 27 of 2024 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certificate of substantial completion to the contract between the city of Natchitoches and ACA Mechanical Industrial LLC for HVAC improvements at the Martin Luther King Jr. Recreational Community Center. Bid number 0649, whereas the city of Natchitoches has contracted with ACA Mechanical Industrial for HVAC improvements at the Martin Luther King Jr. Recreational Community Center. And whereas this work has been completed, and whereas a substantial completion inspection has performed, has been performed by the engineer and a representative of the city of Natchitoches, and they find the project to be complete. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Natchitoches in legal session convening that the Honorable Ronnie Williams, Jr., Mayor, be and is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to execute the reference certificate of substantial completion for ACA Mechanical Industrial LLC. And I move to adopt Resolution number 27 of 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. This is typical whenever a project is, when we're complete with a project. So, any, any questions here, council, or comments or questions, anybody? Do we know when we're going to start? I know you probably said this before. Ed, when is it starting?
First week of May.
Okay, first week of May.
Good. Is there end?
Last week.
Last week of May. I, after I said it, I thought back, last week of May.
Last week of May is when it's starting. Okay.
And that'll be a much quicker project.
Mm-hmm. Not as much work, maybe?
No, it's probably looking at about two weeks or so.
Okay.
Now, this is outside work. We didn't have the other issues that we had to deal with at the MLK Wrecks Center. So, the units you see outside behind the event center are going to be swapped out.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll add one comment. They have it staged now that they'll take one unit out at a time so that we'll never be completely down with AC. And once they get one of the new units installed running, then they'll take the second one out.
Mm-hmm. Good, good. All right. Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
I just wanted to say that ACA group that did the HVAC system at our gym, they were great before, during, and after. I mean, they've been Johnny on the spot with any things, any kind of issues we had. They were easy to work with. And I just hope the event center goes as well as our project went. It was really.
Well, they gave some pretty descriptive notes, I thought.
They were great people to work with.
That they were the ones providing those little notes of the project stuff? That's them?
That was the engineer.
That was the engineer.
Okay, that wasn't ACA. All right, I thought that was pretty good. All right, any other comment? Seeing that, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Also, we've got some announcements, regroup. Especially as we're getting a little closer to hurricane season, we'll probably put out a press release about that. But we certainly want people to download the Regroup app. And then, as we're getting in our spring season, a lot of things going on, better weather's coming. I want you to download the Go Natchitoches app. All right, our next city council meeting is going to be Monday, the 22nd. Work Natchitoches is two days. It's tomorrow and Wednesday at the Natchitoches Event Center. So, I know we have a couple of departments represented there. Fire department is going to be there. Chief Wayne, you going to be there? Okay, I know NPD will be there. I don't know about any other department, but, of course, there'll be, I guess, jobs that are available throughout the city. All right? And parish, maybe. NSU Jazz Orchestra presents guest alumnus, who is that Sergeant Carlos Ortiz IV. So, he'll be coming this week, Wednesday, at 7:30 PM at Miguel Rosita Hall. So, that's why it's so great to have a college in your town, right? But this is a cool event to attend. Okay, King Kids, this is April 13, Natchitoches Parish, Riverbank. All kids ages 15 and under are welcome. Bring your family and your fishing gear for a fun day. They say children that participate will have their names entered into a scholarship drawing at the end of the year. Okay, good. Really good. Autism Awareness Fun Day. This is Saturday, April 20, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. I know that was something that they did this Saturday, like a parade or something, I think. But this is their fun day. I think April, in addition to, you know, these different proclamations we did, Earth Day, telecommunications a month and a week coming up. But I think it's Autism Awareness Month, isn't it?
It is.
Okay. Yep. So, again, this is something you want to put on the calendar and look forward to participating, at least, if you can do a little time there. All right, Job and Research Resource Fair, Tuesday, the 23rd, 2024. 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the BND Johnson Educational Center, 400 Martin Luther King Drive in Natchitoches. So, a couple of different job-related events going on. So, that's, that's really good. Right? And then, the Farmers Market is returning. Okay. Farmers Market returning on the 27th of this month, the 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And I know they typically come out with, with some themes, so we'll be looking forward to those coming out. That's the last one? Okay. All righty, those are our announcements. Anything else? Okay. Seeing, seeing none. This time, we're here, motion to adjourn.
Mayor, so move.
Second.
Is that okay? Did we get the motion? We got it. All right. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.